All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to welcome everybody up here to the 20th of Michigan's Court, and let's record the clip, because we got four of all the listeners that everybody's here. Let's all make the order, and so you please stand, draw on your legislative briefs.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to your honor, which is hands, one nation, and without evil, with liberty and justice for all. I'm the Texas flag, and I pledge allegiance to the V Texas, one state, and without wrong and evil. First, would you read it? Lord, thank you for another day that you've ever served you, and just make you love us, and give us a country that will free worship you. Lord, there's so much that we bring to you, there are so many needs out there, and we just look into our hearts and lift those things up to you. Go with us if we do county business today, and help us make good decisions, and I think all the people that live up here today, I thank you for all you do for us.
I don't know if the floor has a vote or not. Oh, Tara, right?
Yes, sir. Good morning. Just wanted to come introduce ourselves, and my name is Tara Bean, of Madison Bean Consulting Engineers. We've been in business for about thirteen years, and we're civil, water, railway, race water, drainage. We recently moved into our office at the middle of the area, so we just wanted to kind of say hi, meet everyone, and see what business is going around the county. We're here, I know I did one part, and have you to be a staff, but I think we're in time to let you know we're here, and we're local, and we specialize in the smaller counties, smaller towns, so we look for business on the municipal side, consulting, so we have contracts with both the side and city, and we include...
You all are in the area in front of us, or something?
Yes, sir. So our mothership, I like to call it, and our larger office is actually Danosse, Texas, so almost to the border, and currently resides in the place...
A L S T Y, or something like that?
That's right. T A L S T Y, yes, sir. So we currently reside in the Grayson County engineer there as well, so municipal side of our passion, and I would like to see you all grow, and grow smartly, and efficiently, and here, if you have any questions or anything, so keep your job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, perhaps.
What do they have?
Tomorrow.
So we have our keys, we have some our keys out right now, I think. I don't know how you get a copy, but they let us borrow our keys.
She can, we can send it to her, get her information.
They'll send you a question, probably, from Tara.
It'll be tomorrow. I think we probably have some stuff in the locker that we could put together, and yeah, I appreciate the opportunity.
Come on, Chris, there.
Hey, I have to work my...
About twenty-one roadblocks, fourteen made those, some method of distribution, education, not education, method of distribution, I think it's ten.
Yeah, this is the little...
It's not, what, what it is?
No, not that. I thought we'd been done with that. This one is the...
You're right, you're right, you're right.
But we'll check it out, yeah, no problem.
Sorry, I thought I missed Chris, but...
Oh, that's okay, that's a trade issue, it's one of our specialties, especially out of this office, so you gotta be in the area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely, too.
My...
Good morning, commissioners, judges, thank you for letting me speak here today. I did already hand out, it was an Attorney General opinion from Ken Paxton, and it was dated, I think, October twenty-four, and basically it's a thing about border-plated language and the note and the agenda. And it basically says, if you go to the summary on page seven, it says, it says, Local Government Code Section five-five-one point oh four-one requires a notice of each subject to be addressed in the meeting applies both open and closed meetings. So you basically have this border plate thing about the executive session with no agenda number, and what this thing says is, if there's no subject on what the subject matter is, then you're not getting notice to the public for them to allow the comments. Well, that gets back to the whole issue on public comments, that we're supposed to be, the public is supposed to be able to comment on things before we all act on them. So that's the reason why you don't have public comments at the end of the meeting, you have them at the beginning of the meeting, or before, you could have public comments on each item during.
Could put it at the end of the meeting, that wouldn't be very, but we could.
We could.
I think there's no rule that says we're all gonna put it on the end.
Oh, yes, it is, there's another, Attorney General opinion, it says, yes, it's usually the first thing, and it's actually...
Attorney General's opinion is just another law of opinion, do you understand?
I totally understand that, but...
Which one given you heartburn, which item, you listed on the sheet fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen?
Fifteen gets back to another Attorney General opinion, I think it's fifteen, yeah, there's something missing in the wording there. I understand what that's all about, but unless you, if the commissioner had had to deal with that, you probably wouldn't know what it was all about, because it's talking about adding material to an existing road where there's a subdivision coming in.
We're gonna have lots to talk about, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, but I want you to understand, you're looking at me when you're talking, they give me requests, and I try to tune them up a little bit, and now I just put wherever they put on the form, I put it in there. I'm not the one writing these things.
I think, you know, I totally understand what that fifty is about, but the general public doesn't, because it's adding material to an existing road because there's new subdivision.
Are you talking about twenty-two and twenty-three in your first comments, because we put it?
Those are kind of border plate and...
Yeah, they are, that's why I knew you were on the floor, I mean, we were in jail, every week we had to put something on there, we didn't want to miss not being able to do this or do that, so we tried to do as much.
And I totally under, I totally get it, but if you read this, it's rather confusing to me, when you read the whole Attorney General opinion.
I had, I just laid it up there, I hadn't read this one before.
Yeah, but it's, it's something that, you know, it envelops into a client and attorney equivalent years, and yada, yada, yada. I would dare say that, I can't be giving a prime example of it, but it even goes back a little further than that, if you really wanted to talk about different, some historical things that have gone on in Commissioner's Court, like the, I hate to even mention the report, that I'm not gonna mention the name of, that the county paid for, that was, you know, kind of approved...
Only four hours, about that.
Yeah, you know, it was approved and...
If you can't say the judge voted against that, I think you won't afford it.
I didn't, you understand what I'm saying, just, anyway, I think if the public had been advised about the subject, I think some other people might have hung around, because there was quite a congre in the general public about what that was even all about.
We're really supposed to get an independent agency to go out there and analyze our work environments and try to create better work, and turn it into a witch hunt.
Yes, sir. Anyway, I'm just saying, I'm just saying that, that I think there needs to be some little clearer definitions of the subject matter of particular items on the agenda, including the closed agenda, and I know it's real hard to actually sit down and figure out what you're gonna need, go into a regular session, but I totally understand that.
See, I didn't read that, that closed.
That it's closed and open session, Judge. That's all I got to say, and I truly understand that it's a congre to me exactly how, how you fulfill what this particular Attorney General's thing is stating, so...
Whose work is it?
Paxton. Yes, sir. In October twenty-four. I mean, he has, he has always been in favor of the public having, now, on your stuff, maybe not on his stuff. Anyway, thank you, Judge.
Thank you, I'm gonna read that here. There you go.
Hi, I'm just here to see what's going on in San Francisco.
All right, I hope you had something you wanted to talk about, I've got this out way, but fill out a form.
Thank you, I appreciate it, I just give you the list.
Okay. We'll move on to another fire, and that's the pastor, this person, and I was in Indiana school, which no accident would be taken. I wrote to a citizen with the commissioner last year when I was there, it's two hours from going, so I'm not trying to be part of the conversation, he's making good things, still working, driving all over here, he goes talking about the park and all that, but I hope I take somebody else's truck there, boy. We've been trying to put in a parking lot over there, add on to the parking lot, and Mr., who are you doing, walk back? That's all, I'm out of space, if you could, Mr. Bailey, anyway, he got to talk to some various people itself, and Karen and stuff like that, got the material donated for the, to do that. What was the public, I had no idea, how many loads, five, six loads, whatever it was?
Five hundred persons, it was fifty-four hundred tons, of course, we were gonna have to haul it, or he's gonna have to haul it, which is harder. And it turned out, we used a hundred and sixty tons.
Was that our, what? It was a hundred and sixty ton? We used a hundred and sixty tons, yeah. Well, anyway, y'all gotta put that, and that's, it looks great, aren't it?
Derek Adams with that destruction.
Yeah.
He's the one that donated all of it. He's in the new way.
Yeah, he's there, he carried us, and our mayor wasn't got elected, somebody, I got appointed, and so I thought I'd be there for about a week, because I got appointed a week before the election, and I followed that, and said, hey, Governor, you gonna come get the keys? He said, I'll see you in January, I got a bunch of jobs, so I got a plan of service for a year, yeah. So for the storage, we used the material that I had on my will, and we're gonna get that material replaced, so you can go ahead and tangle it, you can tell them yours, and you don't have to do that, and put it back in your box.
Exactly.
That's a good, good deal, I just took it with that, we're making progress on that. There, yeah, appreciate it, whatever you had to do to get that material donated, if y'all know Derek Adams, uh, you should come into him, have him on the back, thank you. So, and so, we don't, we've already got it, we don't have to put the form on the visitor queue, those are checks, we're clear.
That's what I was gonna do on...
Under that...
Under the twenty-two.
Under that, you hear, border plate, item number twenty-two, I'm giving you one, we gotta set that material that got donated, and I don't know, if, if both actions strikes us down for thanking someone, and setting some first material, I guess we could take our wits.
Yeah, we're gonna fight.
And sometimes things just pop up, this all happened, I actually posted the agenda early that Thursday morning, because I had a, it is shocking that it's there, and so I didn't draw like that, and we're not trying to... That shook out, it just happened, and yes, long brain material, so we're handy guys, so. Anything else about what's going on over there, or do you want to really talk about the...
Yeah, I do have space to talk with you.
Okay, all right. Hey, I'm glad to see what I was doing out there. I did look around, and there was a question, I don't know if we had water, I said, I said, I was over two or three waters, we got to start that, we had a lot of, in front of the hill, and one of them, we could draw five, but we got water, okay?
At one point, you don't explain what caused it.
Well, Hollis was there, that's in seven, three...
On that side, the other side, I think, maybe we put it in the green.
I think, I said, never a backpack in my head, and they run water all the way back to where that building is.
That's what I...
You didn't want that, you couldn't find a cutoff, now, that Thursday, I suspect you were putting on that there, you shot a bird, you had to go all the way back to turn the truck, you turned the water off, anyway, that's a pity, but good to know we got water, and we got, Seth, it gets surrounded by, in the very south corner down there, I found the, I looked up there, and there was a deed, and I noticed a federal interest, and I think, saying, it had stopped at two acres, well, it's actually three point one, about two hundred ninety-eight feet across the front, so at least we know where they're, federal interest stops, and then we're, I don't know if it's right there at Trespa, or we have a, they probably, they probably would be tied, but I don't know where we're going to go. I guess our question, I, we got something left to talk about, and we'll get to twenty-two, so. Anything else going on? I came out here Saturday, had a steady, good crowd, it was benefit for the troops, and I did, I got about ten trucks, and I got, actually, I was two, granted, it should show up eight of them all, but it was good for you, and very good.
Old Grace, Old Grace Fire had their fire fest on, so, and the Pleasant Grove had their...
Old Grace Fire, yes. Can I actually tell me the place out there got filled up?
No, it still did, it did.
Yeah, see, I can't account, I didn't know where we were, that's a sweet spot, so...
But not the way, I can, I can manage the three hundred dollars per dawn ring.
Good for you, you're up.
I can wrap it for three hundred dollars at the Pleasant Grove, cook off, or wrap it for three hundred dollars per... Trinity Garden, and I want the deep freeze, you want the deep freeze?
I still, I got a lot of tickets in the Big Freeze, I was wondering who won the Big Freeze.
They're looking at us.
I was kinda that side, yeah, yeah, that side, they don't look like they're...
We have trick or treat on square five.
Well, that's something, why, because my brother grandson was up there, he's dragging two, like a stool?
Maybe it's, that's not possible, the high school, the high school possible, yeah.
I, I, we did memo, and it's not out of the, I got something from the...
But for three to six, I'm trying, we got trick or treat square, everybody invited to come out and go to the courthouse, and pass out candy, everybody dressed in costumes, and then they go up on the square, different businesses, the bank, their shirt, for a minute. And Donnie, don't you have one? The chateau, don't you have a trick?
Well, I think, I think I had it last time, because of the trip, I'm struggling. Remember, I told you, so, can't do that trick in here, Friday night. About a clock, you check, sir. They have that Friday night. All right. We don't have anything else, let's see where, absolutely don't have anything you want to tell us about, I'm just, I didn't, I didn't want you to have something of a particular item, and you sit there all morning, because the judge wasn't swift enough to ask you to read.
You're free to clear, I'll, I'll tell everyone, you gave me the opportunity.
Yes, ma'am. I'm just talking, I don't know, yeah, there you go, Russell here. Number ten, consideration discussion possible, vote with fair contract, professional service is being declared, Lincoln Hotel, Hotel, slash, and Airbnb, I kind of made it on that, I forgot. You may have me on that, Mr. Compton, because I, I didn't, that's, that's the best I could come up with, so. We got a few accounts in the Airbnb correction, we've had a dinner out, where they want to come up there and negotiate, and make us an offer, you just can't make offers and make deals on the length of taxes, is that correct?
The statute on the housing rental occupancy taxes is collectible by the city, they're supposed to do a quarterly report, and pay, and there's stipulations where it accrues penalty...
You said city, that wouldn't...
For county specifically, we found no wiggle room in waiving any of those penalty or interest.
Oh, should it be, I mean, just because you can't, this, the law was awful, that's why they got the rules, you can't do such stuff. Well, I mentioned that, Russell, she's with, to do Brandon, our tax clerk, and so forth, and she says, well, not really with our real house, but she...
I fit my clothes in water.
Yeah, I think she sent us just a kind of engagement letter type thing, I guess you don't, but if you're not exactly, you gave us some suggestions about maybe our software people name...
Part for your Airbnb tax, correct.
Yeah, that's the one that's really concerned, that Megan's got good...
And you probably have more of those than actual hotel hotels.
We did, we just took up, yeah, we do.
We have a lady.
Yeah, and they, that one said, have the software, it's got...
Maybe he was supposed to be here today, but our software, she took your suggestions, and she talked to the software company today, trying to get some, a better deal, a better rate, so she is on the way now.
But I saw, once, yeah, first thing, oh, they're not, they're not even wanting to do this, they're just trying to help us, get over trying to help, but she's standing there, she's looking at, and that's great, that's terrific, because we got paid insult us, that we got a lot of dollars extended, and sometimes it's hard to get through people here, I'm just making a point, we love, I prefer the table, that if you're gonna pursue the, uh, I'm sure, I hope, appreciate you coming to provide this, just give us some framework to start with, and I didn't call her up, tell her either, she looked at the agenda, apparently, because I'm, I'm thinking, I'm...
You have an amazing assistant.
She's here, that's, I like that, that, she's here, and if y'all have questions, she's standing there, really.
Your wonderful, your wonderful, I know, assistant is very good, she had the agenda part to the meeting, so...
No, I mean, that's, we're trying to get toward, that's very, that's still good, but I don't think we're gonna...
No, as it stands right now, Megan is talking to the software company, she had got our deal down two thousand dollars, but she's still trying to negotiate them sending the letters that we were wanting services for, asking them if they would provide us those services, but she's still over there, we're going, she had a meeting with him this morning, so, we'll find out.
Yeah, I guess, we're gonna kind of bounce to your table.
Yes.
And question is, yeah, that's all I'm saying, I have, I'm gonna say, appreciate your all, yeah.
Absolutely, feel free to tell me.
We got, we got taxes, tax sale warrants next week.
That is correct.
I'll visit you about that, showing that, yeah.
That's good, man.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
What do they do the second?
On the fourth, Tuesday the fourth.
First Tuesday of the month, yeah.
Voting day, too, so there's, could be awesome for us, don't be busy.
I already voted, I voted on Thursday. You know, thank you for this, that past time, oh, the motion was by Commissioner Swinset, by Commissioner Tom, he had a, he was checking, this Bailey's also checking the software, I think you told me they offered some type of package, well, you got the software, but you weren't able to use this portion, but...
We didn't purchase that.
We didn't purchase that portion, so they had, had, and the secret code, to be able to open it, but she told me, she, she, she said, she talked to him, and I believe y'all got like a girl, to where we're gonna get to use that portion, and there's other persons who are paying for it, that we're not gonna need, so, don't say it's a lie, but there I am, getting somebody's money, so if we're gonna be honest, come back, you know, if it's just what we're doing, we'll put it on the next agenda, yeah, good. Next again.
This year, my pleasure.
Yes, ma'am. All right, item number eleven, consideration discussion possible, vote with through the Harvish Ridge International Observatory, Old Prince Square, the third annual water rally on May sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. So explaining about the water rally, it's on the local level, it's our, this is our third year, and we had a great time last year, fantastic, and we do it to, you know, for the community, all, so the cause for everything, but we also do it because we raise money for African India, for motorcycle community.
And we do it to, you know, for the community, also the cause for the, but, uh, we also do it because we raise, uh, money for, for African India, for motorcycle missionaries. And so we fund that we do generate, a lot of it, that's where it goes. And so, uh, and, and our project this year will be our youth center in Zambia, Africa, uh, which we're building a youth center. We're, we're racing Islam there, they're trying to take over that area, and we're trying to get a youth center in there, get that founded, and, uh, which we already have, we worked out a lot of the, and a couple of buildings, so. That's what it's about, but it's also about bringing the community together, and, uh, and last year, last two years we've had, we had a great time, so it was really great, and, uh, had a lot of fun. Uh, this year, we're also looking at, you know, we talked to Pam about using the, the, the shelter here, and we're going to do a concert starting Friday night. Uh, do a free concert here in the shelter, and then during the day, Saturday, also use the shelter for some different, uh, events that we go on. It was a little hot last year, a lot of people struggled, a lot of our, uh, people really had a hard time with the heat, it was raining on, so. We'll also give the, uh, the community center again this year, and, uh, and that's what we have our green room and that kind of thing, so. That's, that's about it, that's, you know, it'll be the same thing as last year, just about, just, you know, maybe a little bit bigger, it gets bigger every year, so, that's good.
I'll be back, I enjoyed the question.
Yeah, we may have Justin Todd do a concert here Friday night, so, uh, he's actually, he's a proper guy, and he's really good, so.
Would you make that motion?
Consideration discussion possible vote to approve TDA rail project from Parkland Stevens Street Watchlight Corporation go out for bid. This is wild granted. Please pass through County for benefits of constituents and citizens of precinct four and the show by the water system. Anybody here from Lantern? Are they supposed to come?
They said they're in, um...
Do we want to try wait? They're not coming, are they? They don't need their services or y'all got...
They get paid.
I don't know, things are just changing. What do you think it's going to be to construct a new rail, drilling installation approximately eight hundred and fifty vertical feet, casing, top lining, one submersible pump, Palm Creek well head electrical, maintenance and controls, related instrumentation, yard parking, driveway, security, versus well going, um, so everyone from the former Rottsberry and Jake Slane and Parkland, Texas. She is, uh, the secretary is gonna call Anna and see if she's coming.
Anna said that the...
Okay, well, she's not coming in. But that's not the point.
Well, it is the point.
They should be there.
That's what I'm trying to say. They sent an email or we can't tell. I haven't seen any...
Did you know where we're done?
No.
I've heard you around.
Just saw it later yesterday evening and I'm like...
Really? But regardless, we want, y'all want to move forward rather than go stick up to that end of the thing. Well, they show you not, you asked to go for it. Y'all want to get this same road, right?
Yes, sir.
Can I get a motion?
I make the motion.
Can I get a motion?
Yeah.
I make the motion.
Sure.
I don't know, second motion.
I got a motion by...
We look against it, can I get that? I got a motion by Commissioner Dogme and second by Commissioner Teno. Any questions? All in favor of saying aye, aye opposed, uh, she's not, I have a... All right, we go, it's approved.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, I have a full team consideration discussion possible vote to approve the Palm Creek Road space. Is that a motion taken? Is that a motion taken by Commissioner Swainy? Second, by Commissioner Teno. All any questions? All in favor of saying aye, aye opposed, aye seven two nine five zero. Is this...
We can't go back.
It's here, that's here. rules precinct commissioner may require to be added to existing county road due to increased traffic. Twelve sixteen, consideration discussion possible vote to make adding in subdivision rules and regulations, developer shall pay San Jacinto outside engineering fees at town required. Seventeen, consideration discussion possible vote to amend section seven point three of subdivision rules and regulations precinct commissioner may set subdivision rules and placing shall accept the rules as counted. Or an eighteen, that is also about this. Consideration discussion possible vote to approve, not that subdivision, but my group.
We did form a committee, but everybody was pretty insistent on pretty earnest. There was on the committee and since three subdivisions.
Stop it all, God, we talked about whether Ernest's there was to be on there. The four of Ernest's there was on there, so can we let that go?
I have three subdivisions coming in with a bunch of roads that I can't take care of. I can't take care of what I have. All I want to change on that is in our rules that they may take the current roads and not shall.
Why didn't form a committee?
I didn't ask for Ernest's, we don't change that today.
And you talked about Ernest's every time, well, Ernest's is a developer.
Which would benefit from me taking all the county, all his roads and then subdivisions because county roads that I can't take care of.
They're allowed to express their opinion as to the situation, which is all kind of components to this process.
When people are driving them down precinct three roads that are already not taken care of, I don't need to add more. At school, county hall, districts are not taking the roads. They're definitely not taking them if they're in a mode district because they're their own tax entity. So I made the motion to change that.
Rule fifteen.
Thank you.
We possess more, that's what they think. Rule fifteen, that's just now add in to the subdivision rules.
Rule seventeen.
Rule fifteen. The lawyers are all together, that's why. Consideration discussion possible vote to add in the subdivision rules. I don't even see any proposed labels that you want to add in. I don't see it, there's no that.
This is in our segment and here's the number two. It is section seven thirty. Right here is out of our own subdivision rule anyway.
That's the mayor of the show. The area that's where I was, because they added it to county road. The fault is, we've had these rules for a long time, for lots and lots and lots of work.
But we have this development. We have this kind of development here.
I understand, that's why we formed a committee. I don't know who the committee chairman is, but they haven't even met, so what are we doing? Sit up here showing what we're doing in the department, get thought of everybody, and then we all need to do it.
Again, someone on the committee would benefit and it's coming so fast, I don't have time for a year.
I hope that a lot of people was asking us to put some rules in there. The court is active and we can't just sell and...
I'm not cool enough, I just don't have time to wait for a year for a committee to go through and go over. It's just an amendment.
Have you called any?
No, because I don't want to have to ask Ernest if he needs to take these roads or not for each subdivision because we're seeing him like recently. He's not going to want me to not take the roads.
Committee, now, good message to come up of recognizations anyways, but at least you're hearing from the developers of the road.
I still take the motion for number seventeen to resume shell to name.
We're not on seventeen yet, you're not on, we're on fifteen.
You read all thirty salons this morning.
I know, but right now, we're on fifteen. Commissioner, what are you going to change on fifteen?
On fifteen, I had touched base with the tax attorney and he said that when you have an influx of subdivision, uh, broker coming in onto county roads, I have an iron ore road, low road, and they're putting ten sections in there, well, they agreed to give us some material to add to the road since we're having ten different families move in, but there's no interior roads to, for the subdivision to be, so we're trying to get some added material. And they said we need to get that in our rules and regulations if we were wanting to ask them. Sometimes the...
This seminar, every night, every night, somebody goes to a lit seminar, we gotta come in here and change.
I go to every one of them.
Without running anything by the committee.
The committee is...
We're not on the committee, not a lot.
Well, that way the party that I won't let on it.
I know, man. So you get to do it your way because you don't like who's on the committee?
Not even one on the committee, I didn't want committee, I just wanted to change this.
Mr. Woods, who's on the committee?
It's one.
I think I am.
You are? That's all? And then this?
I don't remember.
You don't have, you haven't... I think that's probably all. Nah, that's all else.
No, I tried to put Blake on there, we thought that was a conflict interest. I thought it was a conflict interest and...
The point is, I'm trying to tell you, before those two things, and just because it don't go your way, you don't get to just skip all that and do it your way anymore.
I still want more changes in the subdivision, in the committee, but this is something I want to do as a separate amendment ahead of time because we don't have time for a year mark of committee needs to get this changed. Because all the commissioners in the state are doing that. They're not, it's not just something I made.
So why are you gonna put fifteen in the rules?
I just would like to add the...
I don't really know what you're gonna try to do on fifteen.
Well, fifteen, I think it has shell or snows.
Seventeen, okay. Fifteen, so it's maintenance or may be, may require to be added to the existing county road by the developers.
Most developers, developers...
Unless you're down with the developers, that will take some of the roads that they're trying to run down.
Yeah, because most of the people in charge don't want to live on an iron ore road when it starts getting wet and slip. So, well, we can't, we can't afford to do any better right now and so they're adding a little material. A lot of the developers are doing it on their own thing. According to the tax attorney, we can add it into our development.
Add what? I don't even know what you want me to say.
The precinct commissioner may require material added to existing county road by the...
Material is, of course. That's all I'm just contributing because I'm not asking your request. What you got on your request, that doesn't make sense.
Well, that says material. It says it online.
So, so where's it going rules? That's what I'm trying to figure. Where do you want to get the rules made?
I just would like to add it in.
Well, I next law six, I have the very first section of the roads.
I say yes.
I don't know, I thought we gave, uh, we'll disagreeing, saying the jack of the road. So what you're saying, the rules say that they don't go into how much material that you got on. You know, but this says you gotta have so many inches of, uh, seven inches of base and so many inches of, you know, how it's got to start out. There's no way you can put numbers.
Already they are doing it, it's just, it's optional for them and right now with six employees and a hundred and fifty miles of road.
We're trying to get some help.
I need some help.
That's what you're trying to do, right? And I get it. This is on new subdivisions. That's our fifteen, I make a motion. We add that on section.
It may be legal, but it's a technical issue with that. If you're gonna base that because the subdivision is adding traffic, you gotta go through your own rules from a neighborhood road, which is a hot tire, uh, truck, they, uh, deal to twenty-five-hundred. Now, one lot in subdivision adds ten trips, so that's two hundred and fifty lots that you will have to add before you can say that it's increasing traffic. It is a technical problem, it is a legal problem, and you're probably right about a legal problem, but you still have a technical problem if you address it.
Well, are you basically the commissioner checking and negotiating with the developers and anybody? So we're doing it anyway.
But if you may have added, by putting something like this, it's not gonna get you.
Mayor, this is my, my report. We're not telling, but if, I tell you where it needs to go in the rules. It needs to go right under the first statement that it is strongly suggested that if the bell part, talk to the precinct commissioner, I believe exactly what he said, I would put it right behind that, instead of our second or third section. And just put that, the bell goes right, you know, wire, you put the sugar on it.
Everybody can call me about the amendment and it says it on that.
So, the senator, I didn't know, now we're checking, now he said. That's not what I'm going about. I still think if we went to great, I've been here and I didn't set the committee up and now we're just, I don't believe in voting to do something, telling the public, I'm gonna do it this way, have a committee, and then, well, I don't like, uh, this one.
I didn't really want to, I've done put this on here two or three times, asking for it, and everyone was suggesting to do a committee. Then when I asked for the committee that I suggested and everybody changed the names, they really did. And I just, I don't think that, I think it's...
Your senator, huh? That's your minimum vote. What's about me?
I'm gonna make a motion.
Mr. Woods, so there's some other legal issues that you're...
This is a standard that you talk about, because I'm, I'm a technical guy, I'm not a legal guy.
I like it.
Well, I'm legal. So, here on, is that a legal issue? Is that, there's legal issues in the country? Yeah, sound like a motion, not a paperwork. So I guess more, my opinion.
All right, I have a motion table by Commissioner Dogme. I'll say it. Any, uh, all in favor of a motion table, uh, aye opposed? All right, four, four, you say that same or your...
Oh.
Number one. Number sixteen, consideration discussion possible vote to make, uh, to make that.
Outside of that.
That's what one looks like, it may have.
Mark Woods said he's already in there, I just haven't ever seen it.
I sent it out to one of my guys, just...
I just wanted extra video stuff with you here.
And then to finish here, consideration discussion and possible votes to make add in the subdivision rules and regulations, subdivision developer shall play San Jacinto for outside engineering fees at the time of the... That's our, we already got that.
So we can title that.
If you don't have a copy of the rules, you might...
I have and they got speed notes all through there, highlighted stuff, but I just have to know this.
Make motion ten.
I'll say it then.
No, no, if it's our idea, there's no need to... I didn't get a motion to do anything on this, no, no action. They were applying, I think we're gonna come back, there's something on the way, so we definitely need to get that. The committee, man, somebody that's been on the...
He's got a lot of tech and stuff and I don't mind meeting for that.
That's why he's on the committee. And it's, and we still have the time to say, at least the developers of the road have had it. I haven't thrown him off, man. Mr. Swinney, I don't know. And we've other, and we've other courses, which consensus, if they record or if they vote for something, they're all supposed to, or they're handed right over, or nothing. I look sometimes at what's down here. I don't, I'm not gonna argue about it, actually. Number seventeen, consideration discussion and possible vote to amend section seven point three of subdivision rules and regulations, precinct commissioner may accept the subdivision rules, shall replace, replacing shall accept the roads. I don't understand what that...
It says at the top, it says possible vote to amend section thirty in the subdivision rules and regulations, the precinct commissioner may accept the subdivision roads, replacing shell except the county, as county roads.
What is the lead out of that part too? Because sometimes it's all about God, like to have.
That's what they're all...
I'm just picking over the wording. So what you, it says may and I want to say shell. If I say shell, I will say may. And I'll make that motion. Does not need to say shell, it needs to say may. I will make that motion. Seven point three three, is that what we're pressing? Or just point three. County shell except the road.
I need these two.
So, I got a question. Hold on just a second. Do you think the... The county, you wanted to say the county may except the road. For amendments when the conditions stipulating have been made, okay?
We got a motion.
We got a motion by, uh, Commissioner, uh, who said, who did that?
Me.
Yeah.
I said, I was a...
Uh, who said it first? Commissioner Dogme second, it's four. Okay, so... The rules are what the rules are. If they comply, I don't think we have any rights to say, oh, that's a restail, so I, I don't know.
That is massive, that's why Chris ran to get his own subdivision, because I asked him, I didn't want the road, we can't take care of. These people are paying a hundred and fifty thousand, they're acres, and they're not gonna accept roads like we're turning.
You're right, they're paying a hundred and fifty thousand, they're paying higher taxes, and we got rules that say, well, you're supposed to do the build a road, and we should be able to say, well, I don't want to pay you. I have the rules.
If I had one in six employees and more funding, I would gladly take all of it.
Well, already they built up every year, and once these people on these hundred and fifty thousand dollar acres start paying more taxes, theoretically, you will be able to live, to do something.
If I water levels, if we all did their, their...
That's why you water cut the half there. I'll bet you hundred and a thousand dollars ahead, future development, and then say, we don't want, we're not gonna supply water. That's all, that's my fault. So, so if it run into anything, you can say during that crossroad, that change in our... You say, you got rules that have all the requirements, and then they do everything you can put in your rules, then you say it may be accepted. Or another example, I think, on reflexing things, if they do everything that's on schedule, we just do what? Yeah, we don't have the right to. If, if, if they muddle along with everything they're supposed to do, that's the, we don't say in the files or anything. Okay, every rule they specify, so who's the one out there monitoring every rule they're supposed to follow? Like, who's the one out there doing a compaction, a density, block, just...
That's what we said.
Who's the one out there doing that? I think it's supposed to be the people engineering that are supposed to be able to send it to their commissioners, and the man out there doing it, where the commissioner may have represented out there for the asphalt or concrete to make sure that's right. And a lot of these folks, have you seen any of that on your...
They did, they're accepting, they require something to send it out.
That you got there.
Well, because I haven't took any roads.
But before, so if even, if there's a subdivision comes in, and there you're talking about the county down the road paying it, that must be at first before the county committee can accept it.
They're supposed to send it to the local person.
If that's somebody who you want to change, I don't like problem with that, but all of that stuff, just, you know, if you talk to the contractor, you man, I understand times that, yeah, on the, on your dark road, before you get to it. I understand the traffic because I got a lot. You guys, you guys know the rules about the specifics of what you gotta do to build a road. I don't. I know that they have rules, but so... All right, so they go out there and they put in eight inches of this and six inches of that, and your guy goes out and says, yeah, it's there. I don't think we got them right to, when you put may in there, well... I, you know, I just started on, approved. Yeah, I don't think it said, it said, I don't think that... You put may in there, that's what... I don't think it said, well, if you put shell in there, it says you shell.
You must.
Absolutely, and we don't want that. We can't take care of anything else. You, I mean, I don't know if you're gonna stand that as a judge, we don't have any belief that there, I hear you say that if money's coming, it's money's coming, but if you take more roads, it's taking more money, so it's not really, not really gaining anything by taking these roads. The rule, this, she and I are suggesting is that we have the ability to, yes, we are, talk to the developers, say, hey, we don't really want the road, tell me about the problem, tell me to do everything you can to help, but if our rules say shell, we have to...
That's...
If they build a road, that's one of the rules that we made, how can you say, well, ah, we don't want to take the road?
There's a reason all the...
One of the rules says... I've been over there, always been like this. So, there's a good reason there, I always like, but you shouldn't have been able to just, well, you've done everything, but, you know, I, I don't want your road, for whatever reason. It opens the door for all kinds of nuts and... Well, it opens the door for the contractor to be proud of, for their roads after they build, because that's the problem. They look great, they look very good, they start building them, and they follow us, and then we have no way to go back on the contract and not fix those roads.
Capital Creek, they did concrete. We have nothing to fix, the concrete really is extremely expensive. You have to get airbag, pick them up.
A lot of that's your last, is there one break? And I guess if they break, I guess it'll be, they get a crack in the concrete, they just gonna be driving. So, so we got a gentleman around here, lives in a private subdivision, John, they come, say, John, that concrete street... So, so we got a gentleman around here who lives in a private subdivision, John, they come saying, John, that concrete street's in there, but we don't take care of it, they're fucked, that's what they want it. And that's what we're trying to say, if even they, if they don't want that, and they comply with our rules, then we're out there, they don't have anything. Your rules, brother. Well, that probably doesn't show, we're not as bad as I think we are. We're not as bad as.
They're repairing the roads and the rest of the area.
I got property, I'm working.
No, they got roads that are wiped out, I haven't been in here in my truck before.
I'm gonna say, I want a little bit, we're not saying.
So maybe you can fix which road?
So I don't, I don't know why they like that.
It does look, well, you have to have it made, and I've been on those covering office, gives you a new rule to make a decision, but.
What shall won't be in control, because I did, these are the rules you can follow, there's a reason that's what's said, that's why.
My reason, I can't be looking at that.
I don't like Commissioner Maturo, you haven't been in our position, it's harder than you think. I get lots of that.
I understand, but you can't just say, well, I don't wanna do it. They comply, they fix the road, we got all these requirements that say you gotta have this and this and this, if that's the case, fire the rules, just let it through on a dirt road, and you ain't gonna maintain it, say you don't wanna maintain it, and you think that lets you off? I don't think it does. You know, you know, it's about the subdivision. We're growing, you got that set that increases. They didn't dictate, they didn't set like a plan, they ain't trying to get us to, I mean, I've got several guilty talk, come up Lee Turner, or wherever it says, you know, I've got time to get some of this in private, I mean, I can just name them all, and then grow that the road, the property.
And they're back, because the county road getting in their property.
That did, the one down there, all the little trails in, they came in here and got it and wanted a private, that's what they want.
But they call me every day, because they're trying to drive down our county road to get to that nice, beautiful private subdivision, and it's terrible.
I know, the roads are terrible. I'm glad about that problem, not for sale. Rules weren't designed to make it through the commissioners, that's the sole ability to say, ah, you done that thing, but I, I don't like it.
I've got my power, it's not why I put this decision.
Well, it's giving you all the power, you should.
I have jobs and I can't, I can't, I don't wanna die decent, until I get those bits, I can accept one.
You know, you don't feel that.
I love what I'm doing.
You spend a lot of time, you try to get that job, and it's the best part of the job.
I'm doing a good job, sir.
You're doing a hell of a job, I don't, I don't want one either, but I, I can't really take care of, and I'm a lot of them, and I'm, I've got some subdivision that. If they had been done right, the seventies and eighties, I wouldn't be in this position either, but I love that, I love that.
If they had a red, we're not supposed to pay them taxes.
I don't wanna have more cases than I, than doing, but I don't have that option to, oh, I don't, sorry, I, DA, I don't wanna take that case, you don't get those choices.
Most developers don't mind having, uh, they like the baby.
When you look at flats on subdivision, when you look at subdividing property, you look at flats, you look at, see whether they're county roads or not, so, if you understand, it's like the chicken or the egg, what come first?
What does come first?
Chicken or the egg?
What? I said, what does come first?
Chicken. In this case, the land was there. I think the personal property rights come over governmental rights on property.
Another guy called me this last week, want me to stop the log trucks on the county road because they almost run over her child. Who put the road there?
Yeah, all of them, right? She built the road, so I guess.
This was, what you thinking as our engineer on being able to change?
I don't think you know what she has a greater empathy. Going forward, I have an answer, uh, two subdivisions, we can take care of it, whether it's a shall, or a will, we can take care of it, but he's in the county discussion that will come out of this. What you really have a problem with is all this old crap that's been put in for years and years, and there's nothing you can do about it. Uh, I can fix your problem, I guarantee you that I can fix your problem going forward with this stuff, absolutely. This old stuff, great nothing anybody.
Question if we're just, is okay to say may, business or shall in part?
I said, Judge, in one of the rare occasions, I'm gonna one hundred percent agree with you, you can't change something like that, these rules, when we make these people jump through the roof, again, with these rules, we're saying that you have built a product that is good enough for the county. You can't change that. How's that gonna be getting it, that he makes these roads to the county, he's done everything they do, wherever the county has failed, is we have not inspected, we have not looked at, and we have not followed our own rules, not you guys, I'm not pointing to you. I'm talking about everything that went on well before you, all the way back to nineteen seventy, it's a problem. I don't think there's nothing in the world fixing it, but we can't fix the kitchen. You don't have to change that stuff, if you just let the committee go on, let me explain how we do it, this party's around here, two point eight, which apparently none of you have read, is that the actual cost for any outside technical review firm hired by the county for the purpose of reviewing roads, drainage, flood plain information, construction inspection, or special considerations shall be paid by the developer.
My Rick, that's been in there, I've been there, I've had it, it's been there.
They have said in there forever, and we have not done the inspection portion, God comes in here and puts eight inches of subways, he puts all this unnecessary stuff, he does his soils report, he knows the plasticity of the soils, I guarantee you, it would have designed a road, then we put this, he prepared a record on their statement that this man built it according to my plans.
So what?
We have had a new chair, every case on these new subdivisions.
So what, those that we've not tested, that we take in recently, that?
I don't know.
I don't know of any.
We now have soils, man, that's also, everyone that I've looked at so far, that's soil, except for the two of whom you're working on right now, I haven't seen today, uh, I haven't seen the soils before, the one that, uh, that looked.
Have you taken any?
Not yet, but I expect we have our soils reports every five hundred feet.
Recently, that's all we.
Originally, it's not listening to shout out on the floor.
I know, it's in our road, that's sending out the.
You know, last four or five years.
That's been longer than four or five years, possibly, but we have gotten very, very sloppy in our inspection, we have accepted some roads in the last four or five years, neither of them are supposed to be serious inspections, they don't, they don't know.
He doesn't do subdivision.
I know, they're actually fault. All right, what I'm telling you is, inspections, all this.
He don't need that, I don't need that county.
And the developer, put the awesome land.
That's fine, so going forward, you do it, your stuff.
And then you have a good number of questions.
Even if they didn't test them, they don't test them square inch, it's random sample.
It is.
So, uh, the guy may say, well. You may know where you need to be tested, but that don't mean, I don't think there's ever been a road where every single square inch of it is, is good as it's square feet.
Five hundred feet. Our specs require every five hundred feet.
My last building, I'd make sure of five hundred feet, I had, had it. Well, even state highways, they build new highways, and you go, there's always some areas exist, so we don't have theirs. All right, we got a motion to change the word, uh, shall to may, by Commissioner to, uh, second by Commissioner Donnie, any other questions or comment? All my favorites say aye, any opposed? How many opposed, uh, me and Mr. Swinney? All right, I pass this through to. Out of number eighteen, consideration discussion possible vote to approve preliminary grant of the road seven.
So we have a, yes, uh, everybody could have had one, I didn't. I was showing it to all of y'all.
Do you have a certificate of that?
Yes, this is business of my name, because y'all don't like to know, even though we've done, and I make no changes, but.
Looks like it's got grains, fire, it's got, most of the lot, one of them's only got about sixty, but it's seven acre lot.
That's the wide lot, if you were questioning, I kind of have, everybody, just give us sixty.
It makes no sense to do it like that, then what's the next, because you have a bunch of real.
I also got the fire marshal to ride out and check, uh, the wide lot, and Oates is not a county road, but he would, it's a food road, so.
This one over here.
Yeah, so in case of emergency fire, you can get down there, that's probably, hold up on that. It's gonna be water well thing.
This is Peter, Peter Rose.
It was county.
What's this? This stuff would be a hard one. So, so what may I saw in the applications, we've got, we've got some, uh, checklists, and I think we still have a letter from each one.
I, I actually got email from, um, the life committee.
I know they've signed it all on the checklist, but I thought we still have a letter from each one, or?
I actually got email from, but I didn't bring it.
And Ruth, Ruth was the same one, Ruth's not a letter, and then Ruth's your ass ticket.
Yeah, I, I have it, I'll bring it for the time, and then, um, also I checked Patricia, the name is fine, it was fine.
I don't think she does something.
Yeah, but I think they're.
She never had the electricity.
They do, she does, but they're, um, um, gonna do water.
Water well, last week?
Everybody out there has a little pond, uh, or the.
What is it, did you put it in the well, man, is that the rule, so that can get considered as?
That was a hundred.
Huh? If you put concrete around the wellhead, it's fifty. Who did, put concrete around it, it's two.
I made this motion to have the committee on, and is there anything I need to change, as y'all before, um, bringing that for a while, that y'all see?
So we should be able to, a lot of trouble, yes.
Okay.
I'll say aye, I have a motion by Commissioner Donnie, and second by Commissioner, two, uh, all my favorites say aye, any opposed, ayes, ayes, two, nine, five, zero.
I have a signal from AR, I've already made it to my traffic.
Out of number nineteen, consideration discussion possible vote to approve twenty twenty five subway strand approval of a resolution to pick a project as an authorized project representative, and a financial representative, and approve resolution for San Jacinto County and get. So this should be twenty twenty six also. So the badness, we have, we have voted on this project to, to a tire recycling program, which I think we've done three years in a row. Miss Catalot, I miss it every time, but that trailer's got more tires than you can shake a stick in, I'm gonna choke your motor down next time. So we need to pick a project, is that the project that Court wants to do?
That's why I brought it up.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Marsh to do a tire project, second by Commissioner Donnie, uh, any other questions, there's other things, it says you gotta. Pick the project and approve the resolution, and, and it says authorizing a, I think, sometime you were over it, and it's, you're on a committee, though.
I'm on a tier of committees, I can't really resist it.
Right, who did it last year?
Commissioner Bill did it last year.
Does your motion say?
Oh, yeah, you want to do, I didn't make the motion.
He made the motion.
I made the motion.
Bristol, Donnie, Ben.
Yes.
Anything else that was included in that awful passage?
You made the passage?
Yeah, we, we have, well, a natural representative. All right, thank you, Chris. In category, we, uh, committee putting up a collection again, category is, committee putting up a plan again. Any other questions or comment, now the motion's been clarified, all my favorites say aye, any opposed, ayes, ayes, two, nine, five, zero. Resilience, Chris. We'll leave that, first resolution, sure, I have this, they want to. Sure, I have this, they're going to... Out of number twenty, consideration discussion possible vote for approval of memorandum of understanding between Liberty County Sheriff's Office and State County Sheriff's Office. Sheriff's office.
No, sir. This is a contract with our tax force officers. They're working up in there, fifty-nine, and, uh, with Liberty, they've come down and... Uh, yeah, they've come down and they want to work hand in hand, because we're all working on the same project. So, so by the way, we have an MOU with all them. So, if we stop the car, we're the primary, we get the larger percentage. They stop the car, then they get the larger percentage. Just depend on where we're at. And that we, we just have an MOU to make sure everybody's on the same foot, understanding who gets what and what equipment we use. If it's our equipment, we use it. And they use their equipment. Something happens, said equipment, the agency that owns the equipment deserves to fix and vice versa for them. So, that way, they don't come after us if something, one of their stuff gets broken, they can't say nothing to us and vice versa.
So, what we're trying to do, we're trying to stop all the drugs up and down the interstate order to make it go to a street.
It's all about drugs and human trafficking.
Good.
Just MOU, make sure things play and send.
Now, get a motion to stop the relevant... For Liberty, there are one place. You at State County, does that say y'all going to Liberty County, stop the car?
Well, we go over there, like, say, to car rental.
You're getting half the seizure.
We don't get half the seizure. The percentage is fixed.
And then, if, if y'all stop it over here, they can go over here like a ladder. Like a ladder, come over here and get it.
Then it's not...
I work, I work.
What? If you give me a minute, I'll take it. The point is this, the car's coming tomorrow. They got information on the car coming through the north. They give us that information. They're unable to catch it in their county. But we didn't get that information without their help. So, we are able to set up and catch the car. Well, with their assistance, if they're coming now, you know, with their assistance, we were able to stop that car, get that information, collect whatever we got to collect. We shared the way. Vice versa.
All right. So, you basically give it, you wrote it, you find it.
Correct.
Now, is it, it's a two-way call? It's a... I just wanted to put that out on the street. Yeah. I'll say aye. I have, I believe I heard a motion from Commissioner Bar.
Yes.
And I have a second by Commissioner Muntino. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes, aye, two, none, five, zero. Oh, this one, this one, next one, one of us question.
Yes, this is another one.
Says he's the county?
Yes, sir. This one. I have submitted a straight livestock fee schedule.
I've signed it, the sheriff, the sheriff, he's decided, and then we need to send it to Liberty County. Next, out of number twenty-one, consideration discussion possible vote for approved, approved, necessary. Livestock fee schedule. Administrative fees for intake, twenty-five hundred a day. Feed water, forty dollars a day, per hit. All two hours a mile. Then, twenty-five. That there, cost of that pair of evaluations, when we're prior. Actual cost to deal. Cow water costs, livestock coverage fee, compensation for authorized personnel. I think we ought to teach each other commissioners how to run and let them... He probably knows how to run. He's, he don't work anymore. We shoot our water, we leave it there. Well, he was... We're not chasing him over.
You're running rough.
This is not a problem, I don't think, maybe it is.
She's not... And, and we still use fire tubes, just for the maintenance account.
Yeah.
I do like it.
Yeah, 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 yeah. It's a little, our sale or handling. Sale handling fee, administrative costs, actual cost to deal. And that makes property frustration, that compensates that... The public, if we get a old truck around there and he tears up a lot, we get the bill for that. It's crazy. How much of this is due for the policy?
Uh, just some of the, uh, numbers as far as funds for this. We, we take, we took down the, uh, it was five hundred for the big bull stuff we went ahead and just made it to two fifty. And then, uh, then we went to hundred seventy-five for each additional help, any helpers. Then, uh, we reduced the daily fee.
Where was that at from how I got there?
It's up there at the bottom of the page.
Oh, somebody...
And then, we, uh, no, that's...
Oh, I haven't handled it.
There was a water, the fee and water fee, we reduced it down to four bucks. Uh, after we went to the stray, uh, conference and then we talked to...
So, the first one gets two fifty and the other one gets the fee one, I guess that's...
That's it.
Should we contract? We got a list of guys?
We, we have a list of guys, sir.
Okay.
So...
Our lot gets two fifty and then the other guys get...
But it's like, when he runs out there and it's just a, a little small horse, they may get it, it won't back, all ends. Now, he needs, uh, a whole bunch of people to round it up. That's different. But we've never had more than two.
So, the, 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 is forty dollars per year.
But that is...
That's a little much.
That is not much.
It is a lot.
No, sir. Why? Because that's standard, because that is the standard fee for everybody else. For every county's rates and numbers, other counties at all rates.
But what is the actual cost?
Let's see. Well, listen, we pay our...
Wait, wait.
Our actual cost is what we pay our, our jailers, our...
We pay the county, the taxpayer, the fair...
That's right. Shouldn't our county... No, it is, it is to me, it is. Our county, our county...
We, we perform these duties to protect our citizens, whether it's the livestock out there or the vehicles getting hit by livestock. That's our duty to protect our...
Well, and, you know, if you look at... We shouldn't pay anything.
No, no, that's not paying. That's not right.
Cause then... I'm just telling you that that is the standard fee for taking care, because our taxpayers shouldn't have to pay for other people's livestock.
Well, these aren't taxpayers who pay.
We, yeah, but you know what? Y'all shouldn't have to pay for this man's livestock.
Wow.
Y'all shouldn't have to pay for somebody else's livestock.
They're decent, all that.
I'm just saying, they shouldn't have to pay for other people's.
I'm just...
That's what I'm just saying.
Fourty too much. Forty back. I don't know, five, that hat, maybe twenty thousand tops a day.
So, we should...
That can't be, can't be labor as well.
So, we should take, our hay costs money?
Yeah, it's any cost money. You go five hundred dollars a roll of hay, not a last, not a month for one head. Maybe not quite, maybe three weeks.
So, do you... Yes. And then our employee that we charge, we have.
You can't, you can't charge all of that.
We do that when we, when we send inmates.
Do we?
We charge people for the cost, the cost for us to take care of inmates.
What about the dollars? What about the dollars? What do we charge them? We have dollars.
Well, I had that up there, but y'all kicked it out and I'm still wondering, who's doing that?
I don't remember.
Yeah, and, uh, there was, that was postponed, so I go two dollars.
I don't know how to fix your fences, it's an idea, it's not supposed to be easy on just to... Have you seen the beans? It ain't easy on them. Two hundred fifty dollars? But you're gonna fight it, okay? Let's not be an easy on them. I'm just saying, sorry, it's never... I'd like to see a little secret.
Well, we did study that.
We did study.
That's the right... Yes, we did study. So, so that from other counties, in our county... Yes, that's what we went through.
Usually, we just push the cow back in the pasture.
We're doing that, I don't think they, every time they shoot a cow, I don't think they call the horse or the cowboy. They, they, I, I cows used to get out, so I got rid of them, they don't get out.
Yeah.
They cut it out there and, uh, I say, oh, hey, they call me, I go out there. They just kinda keep traffic out, well, again, who's that getting there?
Well, a lot of times you go up there and draw them, they jump down that open fence. But sometimes they, they, they do most of the time, but when they take off on another road, you know? Well, now, if they hit, if a car hit us, it's on us, because we knew about it, we didn't take action. It might be a little...
The only question is, is how much could they, uh, count it in the whole rest of that? He said the feed, the feed, the feed, for some guy to go out there and feed water and give him a little hay and whatever else you got to do.
We do that twice a day.
You gotta do it twice a day, so that guy, whoever, you should put down twenty bucks for them to go over there once and then go, go out the other. I would do it for forty dollars.
You would?
I would. You're kidding. I know. During the working, I would not, no, it ain't got to do with being cheap. I don't hear. I'm like, most of the passing, if you know that, ten, twelve, thirteen dollars for the feed water.
I'll second that.
He didn't buy it.
He didn't agree.
I said, my deal is what number?
No, that's what he said, not a, he said forty. He said, if you agree to that. So, I don't...
I'm, I'm, I'm happy with going halfway in middle, it's thirty-five. I'm not...
I didn't have a... That's not... That's way in the middle of forty, it's twenty...
Well, no, I talk about between the twenty-five and the forty.
I got a motion by Commissioner Muntino to approve these rules except for the forty dollars a day to feed water and take care of this twenty-five. I have a second by Commissioner Donnelly. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes, aye, two, none, five, zero. So, do you agree with twenty-five?
I don't have a choice, or I can take this or give it.
Let's call it what you wish. I don't know about a third of this, that's what they should do, just to four, three, just because we don't like it. We'll do it for... I know this is gonna make him mad, from very poor, make him mad.
Sir, let's not get better than that, Jim.
We thought at eight o'clock, Thursday morning, go get, uh, try to fly through, bring you back on a big pond, carport checks. You might have seen it over there.
No, that was the book group last, then it's very, it's, it's free for y'all. It's just a grant that they can't...
The state commissioner called me that night and said, hey, I want something on the journey. I said, you know I got a hurry and rode with you, it's already... And that's my problem over there. It's a problem. If it come in, if I'm gonna put on her, I don't know when you got it over there, but it's, it goes back to him.
But I got, uh, it's, no, it's...
Is it operational store?
No, it's, it's, it's totally...
Commissioner Ford.
It's just, it's just a...
Operational store? Does it have something to do with home store?
No.
No, it's a separate grant.
It's a separate grant, it's strictly, that the state's gonna give us, it's no fun at all. We don't have fun. Yes. There you go. There you go. Okay. It's under operational stores, thank you very much, sir.
All of that is that. What is it, says P twenty-two or...
No, sir. It's a separate thing altogether. It's both group class and, uh, resistant, and we both be resistant. And all our, all our counties, the trophies, including the, oh, that's cars.
You said it, so our cars are operational store.
Operational store cars. There you go. And it's free to y'all.
Is it going in operational store?
It will, but not in one of their cars, sir.
That's all right. We can, we can do it underneath, uh, twenty-two.
That's what we, uh...
I'll make this motion.
We're not there yet. All right. Out of twenty-two, consideration discussion possible vote for approved necessary actions regarding the matter, depending to the county clerk. It's that, 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 are you as far? Again, I, I'm gonna have a look at the, I think Commissioner Muntino, the, 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 machine, all of the, for, and, uh, I think a tractor from three cent one showed up out there and it's got material haul. Uh, they were just gonna scan the grass off or something like that, get ready for it, and the car decided... I got, look here, let's just go ahead and do this. I didn't know anything about it. I, I was, I got a call from somebody else and said, hey, did you know this or that was going? But I'm just tickling this, y'all, and calling...
Just to explain, I'm sorry that all of you didn't know about it. Um, my great husband, when I was in a student vehicle, going, trying to figure out all my problems, he says, what are you thinking about? And I said, I still have a problem with the pack line. That's all I need about support. I'm moving and all I need about support. So, he jumps on the line and faces it. Well, he donated, uh, ads.
I do have that, he could figure out off the Adams and hit two of them apparently, or he had some photographs, I don't know how to go, but no. I'm just trying to be funny, uh, that is pleasant. Appreciate the, uh...
You made it welcome, and, uh, there's Adams with you.
Cause we didn't, we didn't choose the right word. I think they've been talking to other contractors, Vulcan maybe, and...
Vulcan had takeover, so we got lost in the shovel.
Yeah, they, they were committed, but I'm fully committed, and anyway, that kinda slipped off by the wayside and it's all a crap land, B. Anyway, it's just, there's people out there willing to help, and then all we gotta do is talk to them, and that's... Why this makes me feel good, that, 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 so smoothly.
We're gonna have SDBT trucking and Skydiving have donated their trucks to move the material, and it happened very quickly. So, I'm sorry for the, uh, the previous being done, it just...
Especially like this little bit, Mark can...
Okay, so, right, right now, before I forget to do it, you got the, the material, how many? I'm gonna say a hundred and sixty, two hundred and ten. Can I get a motion to accept that donation? Are we gonna submit a motion from, uh, Michael Hill, submit a motion from, uh, Derek Adams, I believe that's Adams Construction? Yeah. They have a contract, just like two hundred... They have a contract, just like two hundred ten.
And accept the donation from SDB Trucking and Skydiving.
And, and the company Trucking. I'll say it. I have a motion by Commissioner, uh, Matino, to accept the donation from Adams Construction and the Trucking Company that I can't complete that.
SDBT? SDBT?
SDB...
They're trucking.
Okay, SDBT.
T.
And Scott...
And Scotty.
R forty-two. R forty-two. R forty-two, enter.
And exploring five feet fall. So we cut the fall, the distance would be about that, but they were going straight down across from, you know, I'm probably in there, but you were trying to keep it on us. I don't know where that was.
Office there, okay.
We're gonna have to get some type of seweries.
Right.
From the, uh, they said they were finding it going across those driveways. And then all that kind of stuff.
And we're talking about doing it out, talking about laying it out soon. I don't know who you're talking about. I always think about it. We're a trade.
I don't know who's gonna tackle it, but you know, maybe someone else is technically good. We've got, but even.
I don't think so. I don't, I don't know. But they all, it, 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 I don't think it cuts straight down or water. The water will outrun the, you know, uh.
That works out here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a little bit of a science.
Everyone needs to help with the community stuff, so.
So can I get a motion to, uh, what is these? Have, uh, we could solicit some quotes on putting in the concrete and do it by foot. I think, I, I, I know you've got some concrete people in your precinct that we had used them before. When we built the building right next, right now. And they also wanted to run where that was controlled it is. So I'm sure you have some guys, get a couple of. We need to authorize somebody to.
Yeah, I would say, so many good concrete there, right? Can you handle that?
Sure.
Well, I asked, what, what about the woman? We're gonna get a coworker to do that? How about a coworker to do that? We got, uh, this, this is, this is, well, fair here. We got this.
There you go. There you go. We're actually gonna do it, man.
You've got, uh, uh, what, Kurt?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, what, we'll get, probably can get it done. I'm just saying that's part of it.
But I feel like you should put lunch in there too.
So if Martin's doing the door on the woman and they're not on that, then you can go for it on. Are you going to the market, where are you going?
Yeah, we're gonna have to, somebody, somebody needs to.
So after court, y'all wanna go over there and go see how much land we have, like you suggested, and then we're.
I found a three man foot tape. It's in the back of that truck. All we gotta do is look under that post and walk through it at least one more time. It's not as, it's, it's not as, I thought we had more over there. I think that's gonna get pretty close to that part of the fence. I always thought, oh, that was ours, but I don't think so. Not after I read the field notice. Two hundred eighty-eight feet. So, Josh, a bunch of, uh, we did write it down here. We, we had a motion to move forward on the concrete.
And, and, and.
And, uh, I'd like to motion that Swainy handles the concrete. We can walk the mark or get the building, the public coming back to. All right. And so we're gonna get. You got about three of them up there. They should forget, we don't want at least to, so forget, cut seven bids.
Watch out.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody that anybody knows that's interested in doing that, uh, they're gonna second.
Yes.
So I have a second, Commissioner Swainy. And, and I guess when we say that, Commissioner, we're talking about we, we present the concrete, we present.
All that first, all these light, Tom, you're from, all these light and portal.
Somebody's gonna go out there and drive some sticks in the groundwater, they think, uh, are you trying to do that today?
Yeah.
Okay. Any comments? All the folks say aye. Any opposed? Ayes aye, if you know what I'm saying, a zero. Good, good, that's good, man. Anything else about, what? Out of number twenty-three, consideration discussion possible, but approved necessary, actions of persons under the operation. Off the start here. Now, I need to make this on water plate, just to get all those lenses and pictures, purchases. My idea is to. Look, he wants to apply for this grant. It is gonna be put under, he gonna, got a grant to get some glass, bulletproof glass, put in vehicles that are purchased with off star grant funds. I just cannot picture the, anything bad about. Moving forward on that. I mean, I didn't think it. Lord forbid, we, we monkeyed around and took that off and then. If somebody gets shot at, if we just acted instead of kick the can down the road, somebody got hurt. You know, that's the whole idea, you know? Never.
I make a motion, uh, twenty-three, which is, I personally don't store very things like, they're gonna be. Two after seven grand, to book the glass and cars and, I'll break an old stock car, that other car.
I'll send it down.
Have a motion on circuit today. Uh, there's no, is there no match at that one?
There's no match.
I can't think of, I, any constituent complaining about us just going out for a grant. It doesn't cost a nickel, it might save the lives of some of our, frauders.
There's five hundred million and I wanna get ours.
Five hundred million?
And I'm, I'm sorry, five million and I'm trying to get ours.
I do appreciate the trade general's opinion and. Probably could have, you know, a little bit more forthcoming and the preparation of that, but. That's why it's on here, so we can move on, okay? Any other questions, comments, but all the favors say aye. Any opposed? Ayes aye, if you know what I'm saying, five to zero. We, we, we're five of us. Wait for your, thank you. Senate bill twenty-two?
No.
Oh, this?
On this.
Oh, yeah.
It's already in, in the portals, done, wait for your, uh, pressing.
Make some P grants.
P grants, well, I, I got P grants where it just pops up there.
You don't need to find me a public officer.
It's something that didn't be signed on.
No, you said nothing.
Oh, yeah, it's all.
It's all we're trying to.
I'm trying to do that.
I push it there.
And Mayor, you're listening?
Thinking about it.
May I ask you another question?
Yeah, you're asking me that.
Do we know when we're, uh?
Have I answered on the long story?
No, sir.
I don't.
I just had a question.
Nothing else that you got, ready to purchase or?
No, sir.
Go ahead.
I'm just taking on, uh, if we had anything on the bill.
Commissioners, if they got the equipment out there, uh, let's go out there. It's possible discussion about the public and community interest for which now actually be taken. We got rain, I don't know if it's enough rain to come do the burn down. We got a little rain last night, didn't. I could probably stand for it, not be on it, my area.
I'll, I'll, I'll.
It's a house, basically, when they kick the day in some parts of my precinct, I don't do it. Get a rain in other parts, I didn't get nothing to say in my house.
I'll have a great, that was on a five, Marvin England.
Yeah.
That's a good, that's a good point. So one of the big landowners has been in tour many times and, but. They contacted me and just wanted to know if we're going. I'm like, wow, they take the burn down off. And I told him, I said, listen, y'all are certified, you got all the credentials that allow, burn down don't mean nothing to you. Burn down does not affect licensed people who are prescribed burn managers in the state of Texas. And I said to him, I said, well, I said, cause we, we don't want another Halloween fire. All that with us, well, I'm not sure if it was them or not, but. I'm not suggesting that we're in as bad a shape, drought wise, as we were when the Halloween fire happened last year. Was it last year or this, or this year?
This year.
This year. So I told him, receive precaution. And then there's been a few others that have gone, uh, so the consensus is, I thought I had the ability to take the burn down off. Something would do, but I didn't. But I didn't find it ready. Anybody here that wanna take the burn down off, you know, I saw that. You don't wanna, you don't wanna, you don't get into it. We're just talking about it under five, cause I can do it if I thought that's the way, but only if it would be the best for all of our constituents. It may expire on its own term, hopefully we'll get some more rain, but. Boy, I'm hearing. Those are really, really warm burns, they'll get you on the prescribed burn managers and everything, but it's, it's, I, I really do think. All right. So Chief, I brought all that up to say, one reason they hadn't started burning, I mean, clearing yet, is what are you gonna do with all the brush? When, when they, when they knock it down, they gotta do it, that was what he's doing. He's steady burning it, so you don't end up with a pile the size of this building. So that's why they had, that's what was still with me is why it hasn't actually started. I think soon as the burn man gets done, soon as the burn man goes out, you hear an activity, an activity.
And so Frank, if, uh.
I thought the same thing.
You need some assistance, uh, this is.
Oh, yeah, you gonna need some root picking. You know, that, get that other party something, what, like? Well, you probably got an eye that can pick up roots.
Yeah.
All right, yeah.
Okay, actually, one on this is, uh, driver side around the kids, uh, even makes a guy do it with a master.
Okay.
Master's gardeners about just.
I was on those, so let's, uh, sit in the meeting, let's talk about one more.
I actually want on the other side of it.
No, they sit in the meeting, that's where it is.
There is one on the other side of it.
There is one on the other side of the office.
Yeah.
Other side of kids.
Yeah. Anyway. I, I was, I was, one night, boy, was a close by lady right here, that was Miss Ferguson, I guess at one time, right here. And they actually, they were, what about it? The ten, eight, ten foot, not around the fence. And I have a, I guess I have a funny.
Oh, it's not, you want us to follow, is that what you mean?
No, there is, inside.
Oh, well, okay, okay.
So I'm kinda funny about that. If you want to do that, why don't you live on your side?
Right, right, they got, they got, the oak one growing on their side.
So that's something else, what do y'all wanna do?
Here's the other one, if we have anything, if we're gonna clear out what they treated, we'll leave, we just gonna, oh, they're all got there, they gotta retrieve them, what we gonna do? Why don't we let trees, for future use? Well, well, we've got basically some trees out there in Texas, uh, a little longer than ten days ago. You know, but not yet, forever. If we know where we're gonna put still, there's a huge.
Y'all, y'all draw, you, you, you put riggers in which round you're on. That's how I'm gonna do it. Cause when you're pushing that brush, you might hit one. And I'm just, you never got it. You wanna, we'll put riggers, we'll put, go, I'll do anything I wanna do, I don't care. But you gotta, you gotta kind of mark, nothing else.
You gonna put a guy in there to spin clear it out from that? I trust, this is, this is what he was doing. Do whatever you're thinking that.
If you run that truck and swing around, you're gonna, you made that guy up for a year or two, they won't die and it's a lot to.
Nah, 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 you might as well, we, we, that, that's all happening for a year too, that's.
In trouble, he's ever just.
Start digging about having that, that's gonna happen. But it's just, y'all, rain burning that. But y'all burn on top of the ground, it's a great.
Well, I agree, I agree.
You better check the T C Q, make sure you don't not get hurt.
He said, check the T C Q.
Come on, man, you're talking all day.
Well, it's downtown Old Spring, I don't think, I think all you need is one plug.
That's what it works. Hey.
We'll clean it up, it's one of those, I do, we get one for.
Ah, we get one.
You're entitled to get that more, I'm sorry. You're in, you got good connections with those guys, that's your sanitation.
Oh, yeah. We did the same thing with this pile, I think, because whatever, whoever was out there running it. There's a few trees, only trees that's best out there was all these, uh, big pecan trees with the, this traps. I'll do what, I'll, I promise we believe a bottle, we lift them on there, they die. Oh, sure. So what about the bottle, what's the bar, what do they do up there? I think, Dan, it'd be something else to put down in the future when they die. Yeah, that's just something that's gonna come back later and be done if we decide to go. There's a bottle, that's there.
That's just like the one in front of us.
Especially let's, um, being, uh, who's the one that thinks this tree?
Right in the, inside.
It seemed like there was a giant oak tree out there somewhere, I think, I, I guess. There was one of them that you could save, and now that's a big one out there.
I hope she doesn't say about one of the big ones you lost out and something like that.
Well, we went back for it, but this line here, we originally left, the whole, uh, the commissioner won't take them all out. Turns out, that needed to be done once we took it out, they haven't handled it. There's a tram over there too, right? Somebody just learned to have an operating machine, but it pushed all that historical. Food on a gear all the way over the track and the coast is property. We had plans to put the, on the, the boosters out there, make a little park area, but anyway, wasn't, that's water out of that area, didn't. Soon as the burn man goes out, that, you'll see some action, I think. And I asked you the same question, cause I'm like, I got a cat key, I'll go over and show you a trick. I got a little extra there, I assume the same, it's small. All right, nothing else on that, let's go down here and pay the bills. Number six, consider approval of claims. I don't think many of these bills has got no, just got no, like, so, like, I've got whole years of time. They're playing there for sound. When we get ready to pay the bills, Commissioner Vard, there's, stated his vote on applying to anything that has to do with any of these things. I'm just. Sheriff, is this the same, we got, uh, Mr. J, is this the same day that you're counting Christmas party, love?
Yes, no, it's just, it's the same day.
Why, why do we do this then?
Hold on, I, I'm old, can't see that far.
So you got it, not as far out and get, um, uh.
I can't, no, it's the same day as your party.
All right, so I can't.
It's the same day as your party.
It is, same day, that's why that's for later.
I'm not holding you yet, until after we've already sent all these down. So I want, I want, so after the prayer, you were fucking shit.
It's December sixth, bro.
But I know you're gonna show, but that's. So it's a shit, I mean.
I'm glad you had it, and we, and, and we're all advised, we used to have, I can remember a day, and still remember that sweet, bitter, cancerous. Comes all over, one of the employees, like, who got all six of them.
Well, I don't know if that boy's still here now, but he is.
No, but, uh, I got the recipe, I get it once.
So maybe you can bring it to one of my, to my.
I don't need that, he cooked.
I'll take it.
So that's good, that's good.
Just give me a hit up, we are gonna have door prices, so, show up, good weekend.
We guarantee that I'll be in.
No guarantees, don't touch it. Cause that's, that's correct.
That's, that's.
So I guess my question would be, is also all of your other comp, uh, they're going to the county and Christian party too?
Well, I might be going, except for.
Well, that was a percentage that, that you spent in the Christmas party. Then it was very, very small, I said, so you're having two of us, basically. No, we think there are two. We have an annual Christmas party, the county has one.
Oh, the county got it.
Out here, and that's why I said, so why?
Of course it's different, because we're giving awards to all the F E's and stuff that are going out, sending them over to there.
But I, but what I'm saying is, and don't take this wrong, like, ain't they all, they're the county employees? Everybody goes to the county, that's what I'm saying, so why don't we all have it one time?
Next year.
That's just my opinion. If you're all county employees, each other.
You want to take away, all, all of us, so, why don't you give awards to all people at the county, the other men, it's not, they're the county people.
How do you know that? How do you know that?
I don't know.
Push that agenda, y'all always have a Sunday Christmas party, and I need to get invited.
True.
So I appreciate, a lot of freaks thanks, dude.
I would, you, you, if you gotta be invited, then I, you probably not welcome.
There's a need to give out.
But here you go.
That's what I thought I always know about this one, though.
Well, we don't, I, I'm just curious about that, is why we decided to, just, I just want the heads up when you have it, that's all.
I didn't know, Mr. J, that's why I was just curious, that's why we decided to. I didn't know, y'all didn't know.
Now, we decided to have that for an awards deal.
Okay.
And awards deal turned you into, uh, for the Christmas time at the same time, so we're gonna be able to give awards to our special.
And that's what I was saying, I didn't, I, I didn't know, you realize that we had one with the county. We get awards and honors, but it's, it's just, it's for, you know, things of that, we recognize in five year accounts.
I just don't want y'all to disagree with an award. I don't, I don't think you're setting this association with your town. We're giving awards for that person that, uh, the extra month, that did something that, the others, that you do on your, when you don't have to be told to do something.
Not a participation.
That's correct, not sufficiently.
Well, that's good, you're not, I didn't know.
Participation, you know, that's, that's, you know, a lot of things deserve.
So. Can we get a motion to play the bill? I have a motion about Commissioner Doherty, second. Certified by Commissioner Swainy. Any comments or concerns about anything, let's put it in there, give it, I'm probably in the hardware, call and put and say aye. Any opposed? Ayes aye, if you know what I'm saying, five to zero. Out of number seven, consider approval of budget amendments or revenue certifications. I make a motion of the budget amendment, there's just one. I have a motion by Commissioner McTino. I have a motion by Commissioner McTino, second, not Commissioner Swainy, see if I can. Any questions, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes aye, if you know what I'm saying, five to zero. Out of number eight, considerations, consider approval of amendments to meetings, this is other meeting, September second, twenty twenty-five. That's when we, we, I'm budgeting, lower the temperature, regular, September second, twenty twenty-five. And then monthly, September seventeenth, twenty.
I'll make a motion to change that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Doherty, second, uh, Commissioner McTino. Any questions or, say aye. Any opposed? Ayes aye, if you know what I'm saying, five to zero. Number eight, number nine, consider, receive and consider approval of September twenty, twenty-five deposit mental reports for treasurer, sheriff, tax collector, county clerk, auditor, district clerk, justice, other PC courts, possible reports, emergency management, fire watch report, actuarial, extension, engine, health care, I want to run addressing affirmative fire marshal, already said that, I believe, that could involve, priest, saint, sanitation, the torch. We could, we could, we could, we could, that's something. I don't hear what you said, was the district, we, we got two districts, our one, this one. How is it?
Yes.
Can I read you there, I'm hoping I'll take one out, you know? Uh, somebody on the first half, one that we didn't have, I didn't get a question, I just, everybody got every second one.
First and then I saw one out here.
Oh, that's a thing. I'm not sure, I think it was, uh, I didn't, I didn't, I'm not sure. He's been making fires, you know, the fire marshal makes a lot of fires. None of that. It, it, two hours, we, we, we. I'm sorry, I'm a little sorry, we asked him if he'd be, if he was ready.
I'll make a motion that we've asked him.
I have a motion to study the reports, recommendation of Doherty. You have a second or? I'll second. I have a second, not Commissioner McTino. Any questions, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Two, nine, five, zero. We have a motion, Mr. J?
That's not much.
Second.
I'll say.
I'll first say aye. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
You too, Ray.